If I'm understanding correctly, now. Often times, commercial properties may be over assessed. In this case, this particular property was over assessed. So when they file a tax cert, which is equivalent to a grievance in a residential situation.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so they filed a tax cert. Then there's a negotiation process that takes place. Appraisals are done on both ends, on behalf of the village and on behalf of the petitioner. In this case, they were over assessed and the petitioner was actually looking for a refund of 1.8 million. The village's expert appraised the property and felt that a refund of 1.5 million was appropriate. We were actually able to negotiate it at 1.4 million. But this is, when you ask the question, how do we get to this point? We get to that where a property may be over assessed and the owner does not read every single year. So now you're looking at negotiations for tax assessments from 14, 15 through to 18, 19 tax year. Did I answer your question?
Uh, yeah, but the problem I have, since you brought up homeowners, you get mine right every time, okay? I go down there and I fight and you guys go down there and make sure their minds stay up. You do everything in your power to ensure their minds stays up, alright? And this is in comparison to this, that's peanuts. There's something that has to be terribly wrong when you are constantly, not just this one, this, this, this is over the top though, okay? When you're constantly getting this wrong. Some heads should really roll. Some people should be fired behind this. Every year we go through the same stupidity and confidence and it has to stop. You get mine right, get theirs right.
Captain Yara?
I also wanted to ask or make comment regarding the tax cert 4175 Fulton. That's the big office building that's on Fulton.
Fulton Terrace 175.
Yeah, across like terminal.
Imperial Plaza, yes.
It's a big office building and it also includes a big parking garage and other buildings as well. And when Ms. Winston said that, you know, I asked you about a pilot, I'm surprised you didn't remember, but there was a pilot. This property had a 10-year pilot issued by the IDA. And it has, over the years, lost the community a great deal of money under the pilot. The pilot ended in 2014 and at that time, the property was sold for 35 million dollars. And now, they're trying to, and it was sold again in 2015 also approximately 35, I'm sorry, 25 million. Did I say 35 and then 25 million? So, I looked up the appraised values in, on the Nassau County website and it indicated in 2017, it was worth close to 15 million. Suddenly, in 2018, they dropped it down to 7 million and in 2019, they put 6 million. But then to 2020, they put 23 million. That's in the Nassau County website. As I said, it was sold in 2015 for 25.5 million dollars. And now, they're asking for the tax refund after having a 10-year pilot. And during that time, it also went into foreclosure and it's not even clear whether they ever really got even the pilot money from this, from this particular building. But I just wanted to bring this type of information to your attention as well as the attention of the community. Because as Ms. Winston said, these, these tax refunds, in other words, they're asking for, and what the vote is here tonight, is to give them back 1.4 million dollars. And it seems awfully high, particularly when the building was sold for 25 million just a few years ago. So, I just wanted to give you that information and I feel that this type of thing happens so much. I have been coming to these meetings for 20 years and you've been here and you've been here and you've seen the amounts of millions of dollars that get back, given back to these companies. And it just seems to me that there needs to be that decision. This there needs to be an investigation. This type of thing to me is bizarre and it really needs to have an investigation. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask you, what would happen if we refused it?
Um, then it would go forward with litigation. We prefer to outside counsel. The village would incur legal costs for that and they would defend it in Supreme Court. And if we go to trial, we don't know what the judgment would be in that.
But this is, this went to court already, so.
It has been filed, but this was a negotiated settlement in-house based upon the appraisal that we.
Okay, thank you. In other words, it's possible we couldn't refuse it. It goes to trial. We have to pay for an outside attorney and the termination of the court would be enforced upon this board and the presence of this community and we don't know what that number would be. So it's a question now of us trying to do the best by the village in regards to what exactly we need to handle this situation. We will vote accordingly in the Supreme Court.
I'll also add that there's no guarantee for payment plan if you go to court where the negotiation, where there's payment plans every 90 days.
That's a good point. If we go to court, it's possible that they could tell us to pay the entire sum at one time. When you negotiate, you have the opportunity to be able to move it over a little bit longer period of time. I think it's comfortably, well, not the right word. If it did that, I can. Okay, thank you.
Who's taking the payment? The new, the new ownership or the?
It runs with the property. So if the, if they were to sell it again, the new owner would also get the benefit of the grievance.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Mayor Ryan, the Board of Trustees wishes to announce that Sharicee Vanderhold, Village Attorney, and Grace Lawrence, Acting Treasurer, as members of the Personal Wireless Facilities for the Social and Local Law Number 4-20, move to term expiring on April 1st, 2019 without compensation. Resolve that upon the recommendation by Samantha Townsend, Deputy Clerk, to have the minutes waived from the meeting of the special meeting January 9th, 2019, and irregular meeting on January 13th, 2019 be discussed with and accepted as reviewed. Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Presentations of activities report.
I move.
Vanessa Henry, Recreation and Parks Commission. Trustee Johnson?
Good morning.
Juanita Hogwood, Executive Director of Human Relations.
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Rethrow?
Greetings, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Trustee Pettis, Trustee Johnson, and Trustee Daniels.
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Good evening.
Reported by Village Justice for the month of December 2018.
Actuaries Report for the Human Relations Council for January 2018.
Total number of cases before the court, 1,577.
Thursday, January 17th, 2019, the Human Relations Council held its monthly meeting.
Total's money remitted to the village controller, 155,780.
President Terry Banks, Marilyn Burt, and myself. The council discussed its annual Black History Month program coming up.
Copy of this report is on file in Village Clerk's office during regular business hours.
The theme is entitled "Embracing the Migrations of African Americans."
Resolution schedules a public hearing to consider amending Chapter 95, Article 8, conduct
This theme addresses the migrations by African Americans who were driven from their homes by unsatisfactory economic opportunities and harsh segregation laws.
in public places the code of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead, whereas the Village Board of Trustees desires to amend the code of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead
We have flyers in the back. We will be concentrating on the Hong Renaissance for the.
so as to further promote the safety act and within the public transportation facilities
Also, Monday, January 21st, 2019, the Village of Hempstead, along with the United People's
located in the Village of Hempstead. And now therefore, the Village Board of Trustees hereby schedules a public hearing to be held
Organization, held the 26th Annual Martin Luther King Jr. Parade Celebration at the Cathedral
on the 5th day of March, 2019, at 6:15 PM at Village Hall 99, James Z. Garner, Hempstead,
at Miracle. Reverend Dr. Donald Butler, one of Hempstead's own, was the keynote speaker for this.
New York, to consider amending Chapter 95, Article 8, conduct prohibited in public places.
Keep that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now at this time, we're gonna have the board's complaint come forward. Any motion?
Voe.
Reginald Lucas to head second lady council's terms.
Sir.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Good evening, ladies and trustees.
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Rethrow?
Good evening.
I'm here to report on the, we have our day bus trip to Albany. It's gonna be February 16th. The bus is gonna depart at 5:30 AM and return at 7:40 PM. The tickets are $35 per person. High school students can go free, but they have, they must have chaperone, chaperones available. So what we're trying to do is get high school students knowledge of Albany and our representatives that's up there. Thank you.
Now at this time, we're gonna have Vanessa Henry from Recreation and Parks.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor Ryan and Deputy Mayor, Village Trustees. The Parks and Recreation Commission monthly meeting was held Tuesday, January 29th, at Kennedy Memorial Park from 6:30 PM to 7:45 PM. In attendance were Commissioners Renee Cordura, Jeff Spencer, Ricky Cook, Robert Borum, Superintendent Joy Sanders, Deputy Mayor Charles Rethrow, and Trustee Lamont Johnson. Absent were Commissioners Lawless Watts and Randy Harrison. The meeting was called to order at 6:30 PM by the chairperson. It was motion to accept the meeting about minutes from the December's meeting. The motion was seconded by Commissioner Spencer and the motion was carried. The commission reviewed 10 letters from the community requesting the use of the facilities to Hempstead Parks. 8 requests was approved, 1 request was placed on hold pending further information, and 1 request was denied, but that organization was granted the opportunity to attend our next meeting. Because there was a few questions that the commissioner had regarding the address that was on the letterhead, the location of the organization in Hempstead, and also the membership among Hempstead residents. The commission discussed new business. The skate park plots at Kennedy Memorial Park ran opening will be April 27th. Time to be announced. There's also another bid that went out for the kitchen in Kennedy Memorial Park. And we also discussed the completion of the new athletic field at Kennedy Memorial Park. There wasn't really an exact date on when that would be completed. Ringmaster Championship, I was saying, will be held at Kennedy Park on February 24th and March 24th. Also, the park commission is in the, right now, we're trying to establish new policies, applications, and fees regarding the use of Kennedy Park's fields and Kennedy Park's auditorium and Kennedy Park's senior room and also Kennedy Park's gym. And once this is completed, of course, we will give a copy to the board. We would like this information, once it's completed, to be available to residents so they can actually read the information regarding the policies and complete the application on the website. With no further, further business, the chairperson adjourned the meeting at 7:45 PM. The next meeting of the Parks and Recreation Commission is Tuesday, February 26th, 6:30 PM at Kennedy Memorial Park.
Vanessa Henry, is that just for Kennedy Park, though, please?
No. It will also be for the athletic field at Lincoln Park and it will also be for the field at Riley Park.
Now at this time, we're gonna have the personal service line for the board's complaint with the box to come forward.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, citizens. Mayor Ryan, trustees. Excuse me, I've been rushing. I'm reporting the wireless board's decisions this month. We viewed and approved 1 Tier 2 modification, Sprint and Six Sealy Avenue as private property. Personal wireless service facility zoning officer, the personal wireless board, is a special use permit issued to Sprint. It's an existing multiple dwelling rooftop known as an existing base station property located at Six Sealy. All equipment on, all the equipment is on the rooftop. So personal wireless board meeting was not held or required for the upgrading of the existing antenna and equipment with their compounds and unrelated equipment that was required. A fee was paid previously to the application. I reported that. This application will go to the building department. It will be reviewed and any necessary building permits are required and will be issued with their prospective fees as per the village code and the New York State codes according to the FCC 6409A federal codes.
Thank you.
Now at this time, I'm gonna read the report from Lieutenant Keruchenko from the Traffic Safety Board. They met on January 28th. The following members present were Chairman Mary Burns, Troy Martinez, William Fokes, and Lieutenant Keruchenko. The meeting was called to order at 1836 hours. There were no items to be ruled upon. President of the meeting was Pastor Churchill Stone from the Monash Chapel located on 310 Fulton Avenue. The church has been parking, church buses and vans on Cooper Street, the north side of the municipal parking field number one, and the vehicles have been receiving parking tickets for parking, but no stopping in no parking zones. The church would like restrictions lifted for their vehicles. They were advised to apply for parking permit through the village, hence their legal bureau. However, Lieutenant Keruchenko advised Pastor Chino that he had already consulted with the legal department in regards to this matter and the permit would not be granted for the larger buses that are currently being parked. The pastor was further advised that larger vehicles park along and curbside by impeded emergency vehicles should they require access to that portion of the parking field. Mr. Hempstead and Mr. Sternberg were present for 260 Quincy Street with the Hempstead Housing Authority. They had complaints with missing speed limit signage. Lieutenant Keruchenko shall meet with the Department of Public Works and request new signage be placed there at the particular apartment building according to the compliance of the rules and regulations. Mr. Harry Ranson from Brown Avenue submitted a letter to the Traffic Safety Board that he would like to make consideration to make the first 20 feet of Brown Avenue from Greenwich Street a no parking area. And this letter was read during the Traffic Safety Board meeting. They will do a survey and do a monitoring of that particular intersection and the traffic conditions to be determined if such a regulation would be granted for future agenda. Lieutenant Keruchenko closed the meeting out at 1950 hours. We also have from Sharina Gonzalez to Hempstead Housing Authority, they don't have anything to report for the month of February. Now I'm gonna ask to come forward from the Youth Council, Carlos Flores, on behalf of Family and Children's Services.
Good evening.
Good evening.
From here, from part of the Families and Judges Association, the YAC, and the planning board for the youth this, this year, is the mission of the youth advisory council is to develop a team of young leaders who would be recognized in their dedication to promoting youth leadership, service learning, adult partnerships, political alliance, and diversity. Students must attend Hempstead High School running for grades 9 through 12. Hempstead High School teachers, captains, teammates, and babies are encouraged to nominate youth. Youth can decide to join themselves or current member can recognize student. The group should be like students from all areas, like special education, advanced placement students. Students have, should commit time and energy to specific projects and the time means run by their cabinet. The school year 2018 and 2019 was extensive delay to start of the program. FCA remains committed to the youth and the school community. We have begun to recruit additional people to work with the youth to ensure a viable program. During this month, a YAC alumni, a former scholarship, was sitting here, a volunteer to work with the members also. We've been working with the Hempstead Chamber of Commerce, Young Professional. We're going to change the group to focus on strengthening the community by creating a community service project. This shift will require determining what is already in the village and what resources are available. The idea will be collective decision of the members. YAC will focus on, 1, what scale do young people need to be effective in addressing the issue? 2, why is the issue important to you and your peers? And 3, how would you address the issue change to improve your community?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Now at this time, we're gonna have our chairperson, Miss Pettis, come forward from the planning board.
Miss Pettis, I'd leave a step forward.
Dr. Eze, would you mind leaving a hort?
Understood.
To Mayor Ryan and the Board of Trustees, the Village Department head to the presidents. Good evening. Incorporated Village Hempstead Planning Board met on January 28th at 6:30 PM. Present was Rashid Walker, Lee Worth Brown, Lenwood Deans, Marsha Turner, and Keneeta Pettis. Absent none. Also present was our village Deputy Village Attorney Jackie Sore Schrempf to the planning board and Michelle Banks, our administration, administrator of the planning board. Except for the minutes removed by Chairperson Pettis, that the meeting of the minutes in the regular meeting on December 17th, 2018 be discussed with and accepted as reviewed and it was seconded by Lenwood Deans. All were in favor. Case decisions, the following cases were approved. Case number 749400D, Fulton Avenue for site plan approval of JMJ Jewelry Repair. Case 750391, Penney's Boulevard for site plan approval Hempstead signs in print. Case number 75212, West Columbia Street for site plan approval of Mini Market Genesis. Case 754142, Fulton Avenue for site plan approval of Five Below Store. Therefore, being no further business, a motion was made by Chairperson Pettis during the meeting, seconded by Rashid Walker. All were in favor. The next planning board meeting will be Monday, February 25th at 6:30 PM, respectfully submitted by Chair Keneeta Pettis. Now at this time, we're gonna have our Commissioner Charlie Townsend from the Community Development Agency come forward.
Good evening. I'll have a shorter report this evening to try to stay within the three-minute timeline. Starting off with safe routes to school. Construction for the ABGS Middle School in Jackson Maine are in the final phases of design approval. Construction is slated to begin in the summer of 2019. The educational component for David A. Patterson School is scheduled to begin with us attending the Parents Teachers Association meeting on February 28th, beginning at 6:00 PM. Our student education component for David A. Patterson will target 3rd graders and will start on Fridays in March. Additionally, we are working in cooperation with the Village Traffic Safety Board. Nassau County funding through the county legislators will be used to provide electronic feedback signs for each of our publicly funded schools. The Brownfield Opportunities Area Program, we had a public hearing, a public meeting was held on Wednesday, January 23rd, and I'm delighted to say we had approximately 40 individuals to come out and participate and offer their insight and comments regarding what they'd like to see in our downtown revitalization area efforts with respect to Brownfield revitalization. We're in phase two of this application process. Upon completion of this phase, we will then submit a formal report to the State of New York Department of State for official recognition as a Brownfield Opportunity Area, which will then position the village to be, receive additional points for our federal and state funding for our downtown revitalization efforts. The local initiative support coalition has earmarked a grant for the Village of Hempstead and the balance of our grant funds working in cooperation with Dr. Easley on our zombie home initiatives as well as Joe Simone and our zombie home task force. The balance of our funds allocated through the end of this stream will be focusing on housing quality improvement programs, including closure intervention and homeowner education programs, as well as a specialized code enforcement officer that will be engaged to focus on the management of our zombie homes, abandoned and vacant homes throughout the village. The village has also been invited to participate in submission of a proposal for the round two of funding, where the state is making an additional $9 million available to tackle zombie homes throughout the state. To further discuss our zombie home initiatives, CDA will be working in cooperation with the village's task force and the Nassau County Land Bank to require and rehabilitate zombie homes using community development block grant funding to, also to remove blighted homes. We hope to prioritize the most troublesome homes throughout the village to create a strategic plan on dealing with those homes. Vacant lots may also be acquired for housing development under this initiative. We will also work in cooperation with the Hempstead Community Land Trust. The CDA is offering advisory expertise and services to help revamp and revitalize the Hempstead Community Land Trust. We had an organizational meeting on a frigid January 31st, this last Thursday, and we had approximately 50 participants come out and we were delighted to see so many residents interested in participating with the land trust. We signed up 19 members that evening with several indicating interest to serve on the Board of Directors. The first annual meeting of the Hempstead Community Land Trust will be held on March 7th, beginning at 6:30 PM. We have flyers and applications up here as well as bylaws governing the election of directors for the public's information. That meeting will begin again on March 7th, which is a Thursday, beginning at 6:30. And we will also be working under this initiative in cooperation with the Nassau County Land Bank. I just wanna highlight a few upcoming key dates. In addition to that March 7th date for the first annual meeting of the Hempstead Community Land Trust, we have a PUP meeting scheduled for the Zombie Homes Task Force, which is scheduled for March 14th, between 6:00 PM and 8:00 PM at the African American Museum. We also have a Community Empowerment Resource Fair coming up on April 4th, which is a Thursday. It'll be held from 5:30 to 8:30 PM and we anticipate that 55, up to 52 agencies that service the Village of Hempstead will be in attendance. Additionally, on April 25th, beginning at 5:00 PM, we'll have a mortgage foreclosure intervention forum at the African American Museum. More information will follow. That's my report for this evening. Thank you.
I have another question.
Yes, sir.
In the past 18 months, have we acquired any zombie homes?
You know, we are scheduled to position ourselves to do so in this first quarter of this year.
And how many zombie homes are there?
So approximate, so this is a fluid list and we have two different lists that we're working with. So the overall zombie homes around, around, around now are approximately 136 abandoned and vacant homes generally that are identified by the Buildings Department. Of those, the state defines, defines, defines zombie homes as a ban- on the Board of Directors. The first annual meeting of the Hampstead Community Land Trust will be held on March seventh, beginning at six thirty P M. We have flyers and applications up here, as well as bylaws governing the election of directors for the public's information. That meeting will begin again on March seventh, which is a Thursday, beginning at six thirty. And we will also be working under this initiative in cooperation with the NASA County Land Bank. I just wanna highlight a few upcoming key dates. In addition to that March seventh date for the first annual meeting of the Hampstead Community Land Trust, we have a PUP meeting scheduled for the Zombie Homes Task Force, which is scheduled for March fourteenth, between six P M and eight P M at the African American Museum. We also have a community empowerment resource fair coming up on April fourth, which is a Thursday, will be held from five thirty to eight thirty P M, and we anticipate that fifty-five, up to fifty-two agencies that service the village of Pennstead will be in attendance. Additionally, on April twenty fifth, beginning at five P M, we'll have a mortgage foreclosure intervention forum at the African American Museum. More information will follow. That's my report for this evening. Thank you very much.
I have another question.
Yes, sir.
In the past eighteen months, have we acquired any zombie homes?
You know, we are scheduled to position ourselves to do so in this first quarter of this year.
And how many zombie homes are there?
So approximate, so this is a fluid list, and we have two different lists that we're working with. So, the overall zombie homes around now are approximately a hundred and thirty-six abandoned and vacant homes, generally, that are identified by the Buildings Department. Of those, the state defines, defines zombie homes as abandoned, vacant, and mortgaged and cumbered. And of those, a hundred and thirty-six homes, approximately seventy-six of those qualify under the definition of the state.
Okay, so my question is, why in the past eighteen months, so many zombie homes? You haven't acquired not one zombie home in that timeframe?
It's really depending on the funding available to, available to acquire them. The community development block grant programs are the funds that we'll be using to leverage to acquire those homes. And there's a couple of issues. Number one, we have a limited amount of money to acquire these homes, and so we have to identify those homes that are well positioned to be able to acquire at low market rates. And so we can then leverage additional funding to rehabilitate those homes. One of the things that we have been, are more well positioned to do, is build upon homes on abandoned and vacant lots. But to do so, we can't use community development block grant money. So we're in the process of doing two things. Number one, the CBA is applying to the county under the Home Investment Partnership Program, which is money earmarked for new construction. Community development block grant funding can only be used to rehabilitate existing structures. And secondly, we are looking to qualify the Hampstead Community Land Trust as a community housing development organization, otherwise known as a CHODO, which then will allow us to apply for, actually, the land trust in partnership with the CBA to apply for set aside funding that is earmarked just for CHODOs. And so we're in the process of qualifying the land trust to position us to access a minimum of five hundred thousand dollars to be able to acquire those homes. A third issue is the cost of housing. The housing market right now, when we look at the average houses that are on this list are three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand dollars. We just don't have the money to acquire those homes. But we're always open to receive additional allocations from the village, so the board can report to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Christian Castello, Electrical Board?
Evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Trustees, and Village Residents. I would like to breathe well. Last regular meeting of the Electrical License Board was held at the Building of Palm on January twenty fourth, that was called order at four fifteen by the chairman. Mister Constantine, Inspector was present, Mister Gary was present, Mister Castello was present, Mister Gignemi was present, present, and Mister Dimitru was present. The minutes of the December two thousand and eighteen meeting were approved and read, all were in favor, non-opposed. There were no new applicants to take any electrical license exam. One test was, part test was taken by Mister Brian Flanagan, and he'll be one for part two next month. The following applicant was given his oral exit exam and recommended by the Electrical Board to be approved by the village. His name is Mister Ron Abel, A V T L of Oceanside, New York. Recommendations by Mister Gignemi, seconded by Mister Dimitru, that this applicant be recommended for the licensing board from the Village Clerk of the Village Hampstead, Board of Trustees. All in favor, none opposed. We've had one discussion regarding PSEG requirements for reconnecting electrical services that been shut off for reason, and we clarified, that was clarified through the inspector and PSEG representatives. With no further business to be done before the board, the meeting was adjourned at six P M. Respectfully submitted, round gallery, Chairman. Thank you. Any questions? Not? Have a good evening.
Party Board Kelly, if you cannot be here this evening, you can hang out with the historian, we may back him come forward.
Good evening, Mayor Ryan and Board of Trustees. Forgive the informality of my dress, my hair didn't go like it should have. I have been just not terribly active because of my hip healing, but I continue to field requests by email or phone message to the village historian, and I have four examples on the paper that, the report that I printed out, and I won't read every single one of them unless I must, but basically, what happens is people call, and often they have something to do. And so the archives are acquiring some things very specific to the village. There was even a man who called saying that he had the clock that was in the high school at Burton Allen in nineteen seventy. There was a big grandfather clock in the library. And so I don't know if we'd be able to acquire that, but there's some, these things do come to us, and I'm also able to disseminate information. Now, my news bettering, my husband got his knee gun, and I, there's a number of projects I have in mind. I'm on a follow-up on trustee Johnson's suggestion about volunteering at schools by volunteering maybe to gear historical workshops to various levels, talk to the different principals. And I also want to do a big project of gradually digitizing the historical records of the minutes that are down below our feet, which were tremendously important in creating the mayor's wall, and they are records that apply to the entire town of Pennstead, and I have a plan for doing that over time. So, that's funded for now. Thank you very much.
I would just like to add a note during this Black History Month Newsday on Sundays is having a special section just on that, and last Sunday, they have two people with Hampstead roots that were mentioned. Alberta B. Gray Schills, of course, the middle school's named after her, and it had an interesting bio on her, and graduated class nineteen twenty-four, and the class predicted that she was going to be a great artist, and she turned out to be just that.
It means starting.
Yes. During the Hall of Renaissance. And I know Newsday called me too regarding Jennifer Mitchell. I don't know if anybody remembers Jennifer, but thank goodness we do. In the early nineteen seventies, she was taken from us at a young age. She was a star at Federal City College, and the distinction is that she kind of had been forgotten, and Newsday wanted to revive that, because she has a distinction in a sixty-two sixty win over Bethpage. Barbara Addison had two points, and Jennifer Mitchell had sixty points, and that still stands as a school record and remarkable achievement. And they asked me to find material, and I don't know why I say all these things, but indeed, I did find the record when I attended a funeral at the Old Faith Baptist Church, as well as an article written in the Old, the Long Island Press on her. So that hopefully will be soon among maybe other Hampstead people as well that I'm not aware of, but those two appeared Sunday.
Well, that's wonderful. I can also look up other information on them, make sure that these things appear in the archives as they should be.
Where have we sent your copy of what happened on Sunday's Newsday, so you'll have that?
Well, I subscribe to the paper. I can, I get it both digitally and, you know, and these things will go in the archives, both of the library and the volume and collections at Hofstra. So, yeah, and we should mention in the patch, I started to write short articles, I mean, not patchy, for, but you can, you know, putting, making sure that, because not everybody reads Newsday, just making sure that things like that appear there, and people know about it.
Thank you.
Can the Chief of Commerce, and Killer Bailey?
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Trustees, it's Chloe McGriff that, Killer Bailey couldn't be here today, so I'm rather excited. That's a good person. We will be having events on Wednesday, February the twenty-seventh at six thirty. Location will be announced, it's a celebration for Black History, marking an event. Thank you.
Thank you.
Claudia wishes to report that Mayor Don Ryan and Deputy Mayor Renfro approved the miscellaneous license to the applications as it is. New businesses, Pizza Wonder, at three nine one Penice Boulevard, Honda Max Restaurant, fifty-eight Main Street, Jade Perez Westerland, seven five one Front Street, Nils Hampstead Culture LLC, Thirty-nine Women's Court, Health and Wellness Pharmacy Incorporated, six-three fourth Fulton Avenue, Chico Deli and Brookswood Eighth, five eighty-nine Fulton Avenue, and Simon Car Wash and Lou, four-four Penice Boulevard. It's all filed with the Secretary of State, Chris Martin, Act of Treasury, for the Board of Trustees to authorize the nine capital products to be closed after selling, and residual proceeds to be transferred pursuant to general legal support as follows. One hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty-two cents could be transferred to debt service fund.
Move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
We saw that upon the recommendation of Jack Paul Sorschmack, Deputy Village Attorney, that authorization to settle tax subsidiary with Hampstead Plaza LLC, formerly one seventy-five Hampstead LLC, properties known as Hilton Avenue, one seventy-three, one ninety-one Fulton Avenue, and Fulton Avenue, Hampstead, New York, in the amount of one million four hundred thousand dollars.
I'll move.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Number ten is the pool in the zoning meeting prior. Number eleven, resolved that upon the recommendation of Samantha Fountain, that we prefer that authorization being by the Board of Trustees, the shared grants to the regular scheduled meeting of the Board of Trustees, Village Board meeting on Tuesday, March nineteenth at six thirty P M. Be rescheduled to Wednesday, March twenty, two thousand and nineteen, at six thirty P M, so it's not the conference with Election Day, to the candidates of the votes.
Move.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
It's all that permission is granted for the Incorporated Village of Pennstead to enter this agreement with Alphamore LLC, Avenue North, seven two five, seven one East Seventy Sixth Street, third floor, Brooklyn, New York, one one two three five, to utilize thirty-five parking spaces, all which are located in Municipal Park and Field number sixteen, situated in the Incorporated Village of Pennstead. The operating parking field sixteen has the right subject to the owner's consent, the grant apartment might be taken there on pursuant to an agreement with the owner of parking field sixteen, from January sixteenth, two thousand and sixteen, and shall expire on the thirtieth day of June, two thousand and nineteen. The mayor be hereby hereby as authorized and set at even on behalf of the Village of Pennstead, on such terms, even if it is as acceptable to the village attorney.
I'll move. Second. This is a good question, there's no exception. Sorry.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
It's all that upon the recommendation of Larry Lex, purchasing agent, Lieutenant Karen Chico, at bid number nine, H E N V, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, three, two thousand and nineteen, Harley Davidson, F L H P, Road King, Solo Law Enforcement Forces, and the Incorporated Village of Pennstead be awarded to the only bidder, South Shore Cycles Incorporated, D V A, doing business at Harley Davidson of Nassau County, two four two eight Sunrise Highway, Belmore, New York, one one seven one zero, in the amount of sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and seventeen thousand.
So move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Upon the recommendation of Paul Johnson, Chief of Police, that authorization hereby granted to approve the grant agreement for the U.S. Department of Justice Office of Justice Program, bulletproof desk program, N I J, number S L T I I, for the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, effect of October third, two thousand and eighteen through September thirty, two thousand and twenty, in the amount of twelve thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
It's all that upon the recommendation of Joseph Simone, who continued of the Buildings Department, that the Board of Trustees wish to approve the recommendation by the Electrical License Board of the Incorporated Village of Pennstead to issue a license as a master or employee nutrition to Ron Ebel.
Move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Motion passed. It's all that upon the recommendation of Mayor Ryan, that designation of Danny Mayo as Chairman of the Board of Zoning Appeals commencing on February fifth, two thousand and nineteen, the compensation to be paid to Chairman of the Board is a hundred and seventy-five dollars per meeting, and no further compensation will be paid for a meeting which a member does not attend. There shall be no more than twelve regular meetings during the district year. And the purpose of this designation is because our former member, Mr. Martin Brady, had retired and resigned from the position.
Move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
It's all that upon the recommendation of Paul Johnson, Chief of Police, that authorization is hereby approved for the salary changes for full-time employees of the Incorporated Village of Pennstead as follows. Anthony Cousins, ninety-nine, James A. Garnerway, Hampstead, New York, title change, Department Police, title Detective One, salary, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars a year upon approval.
Move. Second.
Trustee, trustee Johnson, second. Trustee Johnson?
No.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Motion passed. It's all that upon the recommendation of Mayor Ryan, that designation of Danny Mayo as Chairman of the Board of Zoning Appeals commencing on February fifth, two thousand and nineteen, the compensation to be paid to Chairman of the Board is a hundred and seventy-five dollars per meeting, and no further compensation will be paid for a meeting which a member does not attend. There shall be no more than twelve regular meetings during the district year. And the purpose of this designation is because our former member, Mr. Martin Brady, had retired and resigned from the position.
Move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
It's all that upon the recommendation of Paul Johnson, Chief of Police, that authorization is hereby approved for the salary changes for full-time employees of the Incorporated Village of Pennstead as follows. Anthony Cousins, ninety-nine, James A. Garnerway, Hampstead, New York, title change, Department Police, title Detective One, salary, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars a year upon approval. The justification, recommendation is hereby to be approved of this officer, be designated Detective as per Civil Service Law, Section Fifty-eight, A S, or C, which states, if a police officer has performed the duties of a detective for eighteen continuous months, he and or she will remain in C, detective status of role compensation, or no return to a detective.
Move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
It's all that upon the recommendation of Paul Johnson, Chief of Police, that authorization is hereby approved for the salary changes for full-time employees of the Incorporated Village of Pennstead as follows. John Rogers, ninety-nine, James A. Garnerway, title change, Police Department, Detective One, salary, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars a year upon approval.
Move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
At this time, we're now gonna have executive session.
May you the motion be pulled. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
If Village Attorney would like to enter into the executive session, the board meeting regarding a matter to be put in suspense for a personnel matter and a potential litigation.
And there's still a few things...
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
You all give a couple of reasons for the...
Yeah.
Exactly. Yeah, but you gotta say personnel.
If Village Attorney would like to end up with an executive session with the board meeting regarding a matter to be put in suspense for personnel matter and a potential litigation.
And there's still a few things there to go down when we return. Thank you.
We resolved that upon the recommendation of Sharisee Vanderhold, Village Attorney, to approve the item discussed in executive session regarding litigation against Dow Chemical Corp. for the contamination of groundwater supplied by the following compounds. One, four, diotane and associated compounds including one, one-one, triloprotane, CCA one-one, dioprotane, DCA one-one, dialin, dialane, DCE, and/or II, are contaminants of concern identified by client and approved by attorney collectively to contaminants and/or to any claims and/or actions for damages sustained by the Village of Hempstead as a result of actual or threatened contamination of groundwater by the contaminants. The laws of use of groundwater and the past, present, and in the future course encourage to remove the contaminants of drinking water and the groundwater and/or occasional alternative drinking water supplies, including all rinse and repeat, bring them to on a contingency basis.
No move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
We resolved that upon the recommendation of Sharisee Vanderhold, that authorization be granted for committee, however, thus involved Central America, D. New York, and P. O. Box Two Four Zero One, Hempstead, New York, to host a parade and festival on Sunday, September fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, from twelve P. M. to seven P. M. at Municipal Park and Field Number One, for the total cost of eleven thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Said permission is contingent upon clients with the rules and regulations of the Hempstead Police Department and all liability in connection with the holding of this event and observance of the code of the Village of Hempstead as it applies to group gatherings of this type, the filing of all appropriate insurance as determined by the Board herein and indemnification, and the execution of the whole common agreement on such terms and conditions as may be acceptable to the Village Attorney.
I would say move.
I need a second. I don't have a second, so...
And the motion fails.
The motion fails. Addendum one, move that clerk wants a following resolution that Thursday, May second, two thousand and nineteen, be set aside as the date on which to hold a tax sale pursuant to Section fourteen fifty and fourteen fifty-two of the Real Property Tax Law and the publication of the such sale regarding unpaid two thousand and eighteen, nineteen taxes, and tax rates be made for each executive week's price for actual sale day. Yes. Let me do a motion. Yes.
So move. Second.
The question, why does that...
It's an addendum item because this has to be put on by a certain date. We have due, um, it was given after, late, after the three P. M. on Wednesday.
Good question.
It was given by the tax authority department after the date, and it has to be put on prior to, because they have the posters inside of the beacon at certain dates for the taxing sales on their first Thursday in May.
Move to move.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Clerk wants a following resolution for adoption, addendum two, that authorization hereby granted for transfer of the following individual items, two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, classroom as of May one, two thousand and nineteen, all unpaid special assessments for lottery, water leak charges, securing of hazardous buildings and demolitions sidewalks, curbs, and dunes, and E T P A, E T P A, the acronym for that is Emergency Tenure Protection Act, assessments, all unpaid arrears, water exceeds ten dollars incurred prior to April one, two thousand and nineteen, plus penalties and transfer charges of ten dollars for ten percent whichever is greater, all unpaid amid tax. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Clerk wants a following resolution for adoption that a charge of fifteen dollars per item be made against each parcel of property listed in a tax sale notice advertised as taxes which remain open and unpaid as of January thirty, those of two thousand and nineteen. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Any questions for the open mic? If you pray about this time?
We resolved that all these bills included self-insurance funds ordered by the board of trustees, check warranted on February fifth, two thousand and nineteen, through the city for the year.
No move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Okay, that includes Mrs. Wilson will now go to the open mic. Just go, go. Hold on. Jerry Weinstein.
On January twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen, myself, Catherine Gary, and Mayor Ryan were present at induced resolution for B R P, at the time attempted I D A, regular meeting. B R P is the question of featuring a pilot for a luxury apartment building with an alleged ten percent of ten year housing. In fact, it is exactly the kind of pilot that the village, in collusion with the time of Hempstead I D A, stupidly awarded three oh three Main Street. Three oh three Main Street is a luxury complex that the residents of Hempstead can look at in passing but could never afford, except Trustee Daniels, who has been in bed with R X R and Renaissance since they stole the village parking lots. In spite of compelling testimony opposing the application by myself, Catherine Gary, and Mayor Ryan, the vote was swiftly cast, five to three, in favor of the induced resolution. I am greatly disappointed, to say the least, that my concerns and the concerns of Catherine Gary and Mayor Ryan, who not only spoke himself but the sentiments of the village residents, were ignored. The village board members that were present and voted in favor of the induced resolution were Stacy Harbros, the village assessor, and Dan Oppenheimer, a C D A employer. Ms. Guerrero voted no. Trustee Levon Johnson was busy in action. The purpose of having Hempstead Village residents on the time of Hempstead I D A Board is to ensure that the residents of the village have input and representation that is both impartial and fair. That was supposed to eliminate decisions made on behalf of the village by the time of Hempstead I D A that are blatantly unjust and racially motivated. Pilots are extremely unpopular in the village, and rightfully so. This village cannot afford members on the time of Hempstead I D A Board undermining the will of not only Mayor Ryan, but also the village residents. Those members who have allowed themselves to be intimidated and silenced should resign or be fired. It is disgraceful that the mayor and the village board members continue to allow the residents that attend these meetings to be disrespected, ignored, and treated in such an unprofessional manner. As a taxpayer of the village, my question is with regards to how each individual on the board vote shouldn't have gone unanswered. Mayor Ryan and the board members should not have succumbed like cowards to the status quo. It is interesting to note that the Island Park residents who were present for a public hearing regarding the tenure pilot in their neighborhood were treated with dignity and respect. The village of Island Park, whose demographics are the polar opposite of the village of Hempstead, their concerns were taken into account, and a swift unanimous no vote for their pilot was granted. We don't need affordable, and we don't need luxury, period. And the sooner you get that through your thick skulls, the better off we'll be. And I have a question to do with where were you?
Where I was, where I was is none of your concern?
Oh, it should be.
No, no.
If you're sitting on that board, then you should be present, so that your vote can be counted.
I had a...
Well, then you need to step down.
My son, you've...
You need to step down.
You made a mistake, honey, move on.
You still didn't get your vote.
Mrs. Wilson, thank you. Reginald Benjamin?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Trustees, Chief, my blessed you, sir. Good evening to all of you. I'm here a whole different reason. We have in our community a lot of people that are not working and unemployed. I had a situation where we had twenty-four men that was in jeopardy of losing a little job that they did have because they did not have the OSHA training, the law changed December thirty-first, and they didn't have the training that they need. I have thirty-eight men right here that are working but don't have the OSHA thirty training. I'm here on a positive note to say, I think, I thank God for the commissioner, because she provided the funds so that the people can get the OSHA thirty training. We got thirty-three men, instead of losing jobs, they're going to be able to keep their jobs because she stepped up to the plate, and I appreciate her so much for that, the support that she gives to real people in the real area that needs for real jobs, and so I thank God for her. The other thing is, we also was able to get a grant for thirty other people to get the OSHA ten training because of the fact that we got those grants to train those men. Also, just for an update, we have been able to reach out to the people over at Mont Luther King Drive, they have committed to hiring eight people. The problem with that, the people that they're trying to hire have to have no record, and so far they're looking into taking eight of those men and put them to work. The Dell Bus Company have been calling us and very proactive in terms of helping local people get an opportunity to go to work on those jobs. Those are good things that are happening. I'm just asking the village one question, one thing to do, is to stay on top of these developers as they're coming in, and to make sure they continue to work with the young people that live here in the village of Hempstead who need an opportunity for fair hiring. So I don't have any negative complaints, I'm just going to thank you for seeing the need to give our young people an opportunity to go to work.
Reginald Benjamin, before you sit down, true, it's an oversight, but let me just point out, it's men or women.
I'm always talking in the masculine, we have plenty of women that are working awesome, and we're grateful. The women are more easier to get employed than it is the men, so that's why I'm always talking about men, but we're talking about men and women, I apologize for that.
Thank you, sir. Reginald Lucas?
Good evening, Mayor, Trustees again. The first thing I'd like to talk about is, uh, cab...
All right, the next person.
All right, let's get to order here. It's cab blowing at five o'clock in the morning, blowing homes for the passengers. I like that they're looking to the cab, but they're not allowed to blow their horn that early in the morning to disturb other residents, you know, when they're thinking about it. Number two, of course, I'd like to know an update on a crime that occurred since the last meeting, gunshots, knife wounds, of any type of crime that happened to any of the residents of the Village of Hempstead. Filling potholes and construction holes on Front Street. They seem to be, right after they paved the, uh, Front Street between the Rissler and Ingram Boulevard, they came along and cut out little square holes, and they didn't fill the property, so that any hole you go over is a dump. You know what I mean? So somebody ought to look into that and find out, how can they fill it up to street level? Sidewalk parking on Front Street and Main. Is any illegal lines there? Seem to have estimated a bunch of cars there parked any kind of way they want to park on Front Street and Main. Uh, north, okay, this is for all the candidates, I don't know whoever the candidate are that's running for trustee. The Duncan Estates is having an open meeting, so that the candidates, whoever they are, because I don't know how many there are, is invited to come to the meeting at seven thirty at the North Campus, uh, St. Louis Hospital, and letting the residents know who they are and why they want to run for trustee.
Dick and Tom?
Uh, what's that, the Evans or something like that? Seven thirty P. M.
February?
Seven thirty P. M.
Seven thirty P. M. Monday, February. This Monday coming up. Any new bars opening? I'd like to know where and how they get their licenses. That's about it, so we're just starting, who would like to answer some of these questions?
We have believed that we'll know on February thirteenth, will we not? Who the candidates will be for the two trustees?
That will, well, the final day for, today was the first day to accept independent nomination petitions. The final day is on February the thirteenth, but it can be postmarked on February thirteenth, so we might know by the fourteenth. Then thereafter, then thereafter, there's written specifications that's done, and then once we do that and we find out they are actually able to run and have good one hundred signatures, then we would send out acceptance letters and/or declination letters to the actual individuals who are running for those two open seats. So we will not officially know until around the seventeenth, thirty-eighth, tenth of February. So if you would like to send that letter to the clerk's office, that way we can make that known to the candidates, we would gladly accept the invitation.
Uh, yes, I would like that, but the meantime, I would do some of that, but I'm just trying to print out verbally in case I, you know, step up, that they are invited to say who they are and why they want to run for trustee. No delay.
All right, as far as your shot spotter goes, there were sixteen shot spotter alerts. Eight of those were from the Nassau County range. There was actually one incident of shots being fired. The rest, we believe, were like just road noises and things like that. And as far as the stabbings go, there were two stabbings, there was a fight outside the bar, we believe, which was gang related. Then it was a girl who had a Facebook beef with somebody, and she went outside to fight and somebody stabbed her. Neither one, neither one was failed. It was like really a superficial wound, the girl was stabbed.
I believe the fight was nice. Okay. Potholes, who do I talk to yet about?
It's probably utility company, National Grid. What they do is they'll probably let that base sit for a little while, and then they'll, for about three or four weeks, and then they'll make it level. And then what they'll do is they'll come in and they'll pave half of the road, because that's something new that they started this year. I'm going to wait tomorrow and I'll find out, come back.
Yeah, the reason why I say that is the pothole was put there for about a month.
But you said it was squares.
Yeah, squares. Twenty or thirty.
P S V and G, what they do is they time to work out, and they'll let that base sit for a little while, they'll fill it up level probably within two, three weeks. Then they'll come back, if they don't stay. We got them to do that with that many, we got them to pave half of the road, but finally it took years of battling to try and get that, so I'll look into it, I'll be home tomorrow.
Yeah, my car can't pay. I can tell you about the candidates, okay? Any new bars, uh, open?
Uh, no, not to my knowledge.
No, not to my notice.
Thank you, it's a very pleasure.
Thank you, sir. Mike LeGrand?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
The board, Mr. Mayor. I'm a little perplexed as to how we're going to pay for things going forward. This young lady, she has the capacity to function, just like a bank. She has the capacity to do acquisition, plot assembly, plot assembly, knock them down, throw something up. She can't do that without a staff, qualified staff. You guys owe a lot of money by that agency. They have the ability to generate astronomical revenue. I'm not speaking hypothetically, but she's sitting there, ask her. You can't tie the engine, the economic engine of the village, you cannot tie its hands and feet, and then tell it to go do something. It's almost impossible. You cannot give a million and a half dollars in a refund, or search her, or whatever adjective you want to call it, and not anticipate a tax increase unless you empower her to generate new revenue in order to deal with the new encumbered costs. And it goes on and on. Personnel issues, I'm not questioning whether someone's meritorious, deserving, or otherwise earned, whatever it is you decide to do. My concern is, that side is not generating revenue fast enough, or it's not being empowered. You can't get apple cider if you don't put apples in the mill. But on this side, we're consistently, tax increase, bonding, personnel, no grant writers. The Senate and the Assembly has plenty money that she can get to do, Mr. Easley, are you still here? Okay. To facilitate, through Mr. Easley and these zombie houses. The zombie houses, yes, they're paying taxes. Everybody in here, if you have a zombie house next to you, file a lawsuit. Name the village, name the county, name the bank, and you can name the school district too, all the taxing entities, because we're going to help them. We're going to help them, because unless those homes become of the quality they should be and not be hypothetically or in high sky assessed valuation, unless we help them come back up to value, the school district, the village, and you, the residents, will never see any reciprocity fall a benefit to you. They're not paying anything, because they paid the taxes to the bank, yes, but their value is not appreciating like it should, because, like the Commissioner said, the property's assessed three hundred thousand, but it's in dilapidated state, not really worth anything. Everything you do here opens the spigot, and we need to look at where the revenues are coming from besides the sole source of taxes. And I think we can go forward doing better things. Thank you.
Mr. Edwards? Good evening, board, Mr. Mayor, the board?
Evening.
Evening.
Okay, I've got a few issues, I don't have time for this, but let me touch on a couple of them. Number one is the school board. Now, we lose a lot of money in taxes as far as pilots go for the school district. Is anybody from the school district should come up here and speak about this, and I'll go to the I D A board and speak about it, speak about the taxes I've been losing in the district?
I think that question would be better asked of the school board.
Well, we have a gentleman on the board here from...
The wrong one exists here, is the trustee and the board member.
Number two, last year, when the I D A board had the members on the board, I spoke to the guy there, I think it's, what was his name, the guy in charge there? And I asked, the meetings that, that's the call in the morning, nine o'clock in the morning, nine thirty, ten o'clock in the morning, why can't you call these meetings at six o'clock P M. When people are away from work, they have time to come to the meetings. Because we all can't come to meetings at nine o'clock in the morning, people are working. And they said, we're looking to that, and they're going to think about that. So what I want the board to do, I want Mr. Mayor, I want also everybody on the board, send a letter to the I D A, let them know that we need these meetings to be put on at six P M. and seven P M. in the evening. And also, galvanize the legislators, all the legislators that are there, who we paid, who we voted for in office to come to the I D A meeting to support us against pilots. We went to, and Valistria had a pilot issue a few, a couple years ago. You remember that big thing in the news, all the papers? Kerry Salas organized the whole thing, and we went up there to show support to Valistria. There was about a thousand people showed up there, thousand people showed up. Standing one, people couldn't get a seat. So we want that same kind of thing in Hempstead here. We need you guys to get out there, get the cars out, and put people at the I D A meetings. Now, we understand that you was there last, last week, you spoke, and you made a good speech. You said you made a good speech, but you was by yourself, basically. Catherine Gary and Ms. Winston was there. So we need more people to come to these meetings and show impact. So I hope going forward, we will see this happen. And the next thing is, we spoke about zombie homes. Reverend Easley is supposed to be handling the zombie homes, right?
He's one of the group that does it, yes. We also have the Commissioner think of this, and we have other people on it, many.
Yeah, I need to see a report, somebody come to give a report. What's the progress in zombie homes, what's going on? We haven't, I don't know what's going on in zombie homes.
Court had been offered earlier to see.
I was here, and I came a little later, I was here. So I might have missed it, but I'd like to update to see what's going on in zombie homes.
I'll be in the meeting, if you don't mind.
I can speak to you after.
You can watch the video.
Thanks, thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Gary?
Good evening again. As many of the people here would recall, back in September, the community came out and asked to this hall to oppose the pilot for the Conifer Apartment Building, luxury building, basically, up on Main Street. And now we find that another developer is trying, you know, that pilot was defeated by the board here, at least it was passed, unfortunately, two people abstained. But it did not pass at that point. But now we find there's another building, it's very similar building, a luxury building, being proposed right in that same area up at North Main Street. And as been already mentioned, there was a preliminary meeting at the I D A board and a preliminary vote. Myself and Terry and the mayor spoke out very strongly against it, but the vote was five to three, it was just a preliminary vote. There is now going to be a public hearing. We don't have the date of the public hearing, and after the public hearing, a few days later, they usually have the vote at another meeting. And as C. Edwards mentioned, they schedule these meetings at nine o'clock in the morning, which is outrageous. And so we're requesting that the board request for the I D A to have the meeting at around seven o'clock at night, the public hearing and the meeting. But whether it's at nine o'clock in the morning or seven at night, the fact of the matter is that the people in the community have to come out. That's the only way that the I D A will listen to the people in the community. And what I, I have, as I said before, I've been going to these meetings for 20 years, and I have, in 2010, I did a summary of the pilots that already existed. There were fifteen pilots in 2010. And at that point, four million dollars a year was lost by those fifteen pilots. That's in one year, and that's 2010. It's almost ten more years. So you're talking about a loss in the last ten years of forty million dollars. And that's just the village. The loss to the school district is more in the area of a hundred thousand dollars.
Hundred thousand?
Yes.
Hundred?
Hundred million, sorry.
Hundred million, yes.
Hundred million. So it's time to recognize, I mean, Terry Winston gets angry, and she rightfully gets angry, because it's time for the community to recognize how dangerous these pilots are. There's no leadership that's really organizing the community to come out. The meeting at Conifer in September was the first time to really see people come out, and they have to come out again to stop this building also. So I have flyers here, we don't know the date of these meetings at the time, so I have handed them out to most of the people here. If you didn't receive one, please ask me for one. And if you would like the report that I did in 2010 on the existing pilots when they were only fifteen, there's now close to thirty pilots. So if you are losing four million on fifteen pilots, you're probably losing more like eight million now on all of these pilots. It's a total disgrace. It hasn't been taken seriously. These pilots have killed the economy of the community, and it's time for people to recognize and stop being naive about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gary. I'm going to take a motion.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Repro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes, thank you, everybody.